Good evening, may I call this meeting to order? Thank you for your attention. Would you like to stand up to pledge allegiance?
No.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would you like to call a vote?
Allison.
Here.
Arne.
Here.
Isbun.
Here.
Lathan.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Todd.
Here.
Tessa.
Here.
Ron.
Here. It's a full pass to me. On, although, accept motion of consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to be accept for approved consent agenda, I know, three A through three K. Moving three L, moving consent in three M if they would go on.
So. And a discussion of the motion. All those in favor or see? Why do I say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion is unanimous. On to item four, items removed from the consent agenda. So that will be item three L. Bid waiver, this is the board of ed. I'm superintendent, if you'd like to step forward. Do I have a motion on the second?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bid waiver for power of the technical.
Second. Okay, and I'm looking, motion is made in second, Councilor, please, your.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, of course, we need to move forward with temporary removal of boilers if we do not have. That is cool. The issue that I have is, I want to explore a little bit more the the scheduled delivery of the new boilers have been delayed due to circumstances beyond our control, thus forcing us to allocate an additional ninety-four thousand dollars. Can you help us, uh, help me understand how we got there?
To the price of the boil?
No, uh, the, the price is what it is.
Right.
I think, uh, so it's better, just as far as how is this thing delayed and why?
Sure.
Yeah, my apologies, if you could just introduce yourself to the record.
Daniel, both the superintendents.
Thank you. Now, like, we're on this major school's market pool of supervisor relevant grounds. Thank you. Or the eruption.
That's okay. So just to give a little bit of history, originally, we thought, um, going back, we thought we would be able to, um, replace this work for next summer. And if you recall, in August, we had come and, um, they were up for bonding, so we have two current boilers, um, at Lenon Hall High School right now, um, but they did not work. This summer, that was not on faith, they tried to fix them, they didn't work. And so we came over the summer and, um, that was approved for bonding. So, we had to wait for thirty-eight. So when we issued the purchase order in the middle of September, we were aware that there would potentially be a delay getting the boilers. So we currently have two at Lenon Hall, replacing them with three. Um, two of them are, um, available, we believe, but we don't have them yet. The third one has to be built. And so, um, depending on how the weather will go and the timeframe for the boilers to be delivered and then installed, we were asking for the bid waiver to rent a boiler for Lenon Hall High School. Three months.
So how do we know that three months is sufficient amount of time?
Well, um, currently, the two boilers that Daniel told about, um, are in stock in Connecticut. They've been delivered to the, um, river and they're ready to be shipped to our site. So, um, we don't expect, uh, this to take more than really a couple of months. The, uh, minimum that we can rent a boiler for is three months, but also probably cut it back into, um, the vendor that won, uh, Lenon Hall and Boilers Upon Build has been doing a phenomenal job and has been cooperating with us and, uh, just, I can't tell you how good they are themselves or contracting, um. The, uh, boilers upon build have been installed and they're painting them tonight. And, um, they're just still an amazing job and, um, you know, we could have one of the new boilers off line and rent Lenon Hall in the near future, but we, it will not be possible, so we need to rent the boiler.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Tad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, meaning. Um, did the board of ed vote for this bid waiver request?
So, no, the board, the Board of Education does not vote for that.
Okay, so that's another opinion.
Hmm.
Okay. And the money for this is coming out of board of ed funds or town funding, it's a capital, I know.
I think that we would, I think we should, if you want to fund it, that I was planning to fund it with some, you know, to, maybe two percent or some other company not operating with it.
Okay, so that will have to go back when we go back to our operations meeting and our focal meeting. Discuss exactly where, um, but it will come out of our, our debt or our interest.
Okay. Great. And then, just a reason for the bid waiver, is it access to the boilers and the timings? Have you heard earlier about this company with the reasons?
It's timing of it. And so, um, this is a tool that was looking at this, uh, as we were going out and getting quotes and pricing, the prices kept owing up, one, and two, then they were not available. So we get a quote for it, but then in four days later, the one is available. And so, the timing of it is kind of tight around that as well.
So if you had to go up today and you're going to arrive to a problem where you're not happy with the timing?
Exactly.
Really, you know, exactly, you know, we get some whole day, it's going to be difficult.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor L.
I hope, excuse me, I hope this isn't an obvious question, but people ask me obvious questions, but our thought processes, we couldn't go to the company and say, like, seventy-five K, let's speed this up or anything like that, just to just get the boilers a little faster versus, I mean, it seems like we're, we're doing a lot of work, spending a lot of money for something that's just going to miss the mark.
Exactly, but no, I wish I could.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor Grant.
Uh, Gary, you know, um, this, you know, procedure, so the superintendent essentially is hired by the board of ed. Superintendent in conjunction with board of ed hires staff, right? So might I understand that the board of ed doesn't know that you're here tonight?
Well, they do know I'm here, yeah.
Okay, so.
They do know I'm here.
So.
So they receive the copy of the letter and all this information as well.
But they are required to vote on whether or not you've come here, is that what you said before?
Correct, because it's an operational item, we will need people to build it, so.
I'm just trying to, you know, the hierarchy, like, we're a little bit different here, right?
Sure.
You know, it's, nothing really gets to us on the general government side without going through the mayor's office, right? So, you know, the buck's dropped there. But board of ed is a little bit different because the hierarchy is sort of flipped. So in board of ed, I guess, is at the top, and then if you were to the family tree, then everybody is below. So you know, we take it, take the same analysis to general government, you know, we only look for the mayor to sign off on something. Why wouldn't we, and maybe it's proceeding on with the chairman of the board of ed, sign off on something like that? I mean, what, what's to stop administratively you from coming here without them knowing that there's fire?
Right, so I wouldn't be coming here without them knowing about it. Because this was something we need because it's an operational thing. So if it was something that I didn't need a bid waiver for, we would go out to it and follow the normal process. The timeline to the normal process, we weren't available to be able to do that because we're running tight on time with the need for the heat.
Yeah.
So that's why, that's why this changed.
I got a, what it is.
Right, so I made them aware of that this is what we needed to do. And I have spoken with the board chair about it all along, there'll be that concern of the boilers coming in on time.
So on the general side of the government, sometimes the chair will contact us and say, listen, this is an emergency, we're going to do it, we're going to put it on our next agenda to make sure that it's okay, is everybody okay with that, right? But I'm hearing that the board of ed, whatever power doesn't do anything like that, right? There will be no record of board of ed ever approving at that level, this seeking a bid waiver.
Correct.
Okay, I just, it, it just seems a little weird, you know, yes.
I was just saying, if we come here and vote for the waiver, and, you know, we have it on the board, they will do the funding for it, so, right, we're done, uh, on our next operation, meaning we'll, you know, we're going to fund it for the council, actually, we had a point in it for this.
Yeah, no, I, I know, you know, when Councilor Lathan did ask about, you know, any contact, you know, those, those are discussions that I would think the board of ed would be having with their employees, right? Essentially, if we look at the hierarchy, it's all working with board of ed. So, I, I just, I'm not aware of any portion of the charter or statute that concludes, um, so, all of this is doubt, I just, you know, it's a little bit of experience and, um, you know, maybe board of ed itself will come up with some sort of, uh.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, anyone else you have to discuss on the second? Nor is the public? I'm expecting, would you kind of call a vote?
Allison. Yes. Arne.
Yes.
Isbun.
Yeah.
Lathan.
Yes.
Egan.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Tessa.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes, and motion unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a public question and answer period, does anyone in the public have a question for the board? If not, for the board, for the town council. All right, seeing none, uh, just a quick announcement, uh, that early voting is going to start October twenty-one through November third, will be in this room, in the town council chamber, from ten to six, except on October twenty-nine and thirty-first, but level one will remain to eight. Uh, via, other than that, you know, election day is on November fifth, uh, you'll vote at your normal location. If you have questions about early voting or about, uh, your polling place, contact the one who registered our voters. Seeing no questions from the public, we'll move on to item number six. Um, Mr. Farrell, do you have a update on the Inverland situation?
Uh, yes. Attorney Small has.
Sorry, just, uh, let me just, um, rack him up, like, two.
Corporation counsel Small has advised me that the developer has proposed a solution to one of the issues involved, and it's under consideration. And then she will also be speaking with the developer and attorney this week.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to item seven.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm sorry, I don't think we're.
No, you're, no, this, uh, this kind of causal action regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Longford and Assam County Council for Level seventeen fifty, uh, the way for. Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen, introduce yourselves to the record. Keep it down, keep it dirty. You have the mail, and the chief, you have county court breaker. Good evening, and, um, Mr. Howard, would you like to start us off?
Yes. Uh, we're here tonight to seek the council's approval for a successful contract, local fifteen seventy, thirteen. Uh, some of the subs provisions pertaining to the changes are increases two days of daily sick leave from three to five days, and provides that sick time is available for members to use. If that time is approved, increases of sick leave and seven payment from six hundred to a thousand dollars effective one oh twenty-five, it adds one compensatory day if no sick time is used during the retirement cycle. Some of the health insurance such changes are to the PPO plan, it adds a seventy-dollar pay for specialists, increase from five hundred to a thousand dollars for hospital admission, an increase of one twenty-five to two fifty for emergency room visit, uh, health insurance, paid conscience, increase from seventeen to nineteen percent on the length of contract, and, uh, increase in security code, uh, code base effective one oh twenty-five from ten thirty to fifty, ten forty sixty. The effective January one oh twenty-five, uh, provides for a public tour dependence of, um, hmm. Effective January one two thousand and five, change in one station schedule, five two, five three for patrol division, uh, officers assigned to special service units who will be manned on five two schedule will receive an additional fifteen days of compensatory time. Wages, uh, effective in retroactive in July one twenty-four, general wage increases of two percent each year and, uh, in addition, it provides for wage adjustment of an hour per hour for all ranks with the exception of police officers, uh, set one, uh, who receive a wage adjustment of an hour per hour for each year of the contract. There's a commandment of honorable language and paying protection duty. Assignments, uh, holidays, effective set one oh twenty-five, permits employees in special services to work certain holidays, uh, events, vacation days, and new hires who are Connecticut most certified by officers, adds a thousand dollars of bowling, working employees assigned to task force to save both of them involved, an increase in health incentive, uh, and, uh, uh, from from eighteen thousand to twenty thousand, we're all bargaining with numbers, and increases of, uh, two thirty for vast degrees, and adds a thousand dollars for massive degree. And it's a three-year duration, July one twenty twenty-four to three years on twenty twenty-seven.
We've got, we answered questions. Uh, thank you, sir, uh, for questions, start with, uh, question, your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I just wanted to thank you all for being here, for those at home who can't see, we have a group of police officers, and I said before, I don't see for a council meeting, so, uh, thank you all for coming, um, and so, I also heard this was a very ethical negotiation process, so, um, we're definitely happy for that, and it sounds like the schedule change is a, is a big positive, so, um, just want to say thank you for all that you do for us every day, and, uh, but this, this, hopefully it'll go through and then.
All right, uh, Councilor Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Chief, I just want to thank you, you know, we have a fantastic weekend, celebrate Longford, your officers were, were there, you know, people getting to know our officers in town, seeing them smiling faces, always, you know, we're getting to meet each other, uh, it's a unique experience, so I just want to thank you for, for that, um, you know, there's a couple areas of this contract I'd like to talk about, uh, on page seven. Section three, trying to figure out, does the department agrees to recognize the union representatives in? Three. Limited to three duly appointed by the union to the purpose of adjusting grievances in our union business. Practically speaking, is that president, vice president, secretary, or is that just any member of the union? Because I don't see a distinction under the contract language. How does that differ?
So typically, that's what it is, uh, you know, the treasury can sit in the duty agreements, there's also, if, uh, union president, uh, delegate is not available, union president's here right now, um, and the vice president, uh, historically, they're not available.
Okay, so when we look at the next sentence, so the, the president, vice president, treasurer, secretary are usually voted in by rank and file, the, the members of, the dues bank members selected individuals to represent.
Correct.
But then if we look at the next sentence, it says the vocal president or any of the other two union representatives, and that would just take it away from three, we're automatically saying the union president would be one of these people. Selected by the vocal president? Not by rank and file. So, based upon the actual language of the contract, the president, there appears as the unalatable ability to select someone else. Am I reading something wrong there? It doesn't identify with vice president, treasurer, secretary. Takes that power of rank and file on the mayor.
Well, I can say that that specific section deals with, uh, arbitration hearing, so it's different than, I think, adjusting the grievance, I mean, I've sat at the vice president for over a decade, and, I mean, anytime we had an arbitration hearing, usually it was either the president, vice president, or the president, secretary, some sort of combination of that, um.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the actual language before us, I know, you know, certain things happen, it's not in the contract, but it appears based upon this language, the president has the ability to allow inside some, some of the others. We look at the next sentence, the work that the individuals are doing on behalf of the union and being compensated for has to occur during their scheduled hours, with which, I've never seen that language before, you know, usually it says, um, we get paid to do union work, um, basically that's it, right? But this is requiring that the attend, the attendance at a hearing has to occur during inverse scheduled working hours. So my question for you is, sort of, sort of shoring that, has that been an issue?
None.
Okay. The notice about utilization taking time off, uh, for union work, if we look in section four, the second paragraph, it says, there's twenty-four hours notice required if it's going to happen Tuesday through Friday. Seventy-two hours notice if it's going to happen on Monday. What's the notice for Saturday or Sunday?
Because if the union president, vice president, or treasurer are working patrol shift and we go to, uh, such hearing that would require us to fill the petition, then we advance notice order to do so.
No, I understand, and that is what's contemplated by the notice for Tuesday to Friday. The notice for Monday, but there is no notice for Saturday or Sunday. And I think this is more than just hearings, right? Or this is taking them off any time for union business, correct, is compensated, right? So, let's just say that union business is to occur on Saturday. Under the contract language, what is the, uh, time period we're going, there is no. Right?
I can't speak to that, it's never come up before, so.
I know. I'm looking at the contract, there's, that ain't the contract, okay, let's go on, um, page thirty-seven. And I think this is, you know, something about the fire contract, is the ability of rank and file member to initiate a grievance, okay, and that, that's sort of where we're focused here. Step one, which is a complaint to the head of the department, under this language, can be initiated by the employee, well, actually, it requires it to be initiated by the employee. It doesn't permit the union. It says the agreement employee with or without his union, right? So it require the employee without the union, but it can't be the union without the employee, right? Can initiate step one, goes to head of the department, okay, that's the head of the department. Step number two, which is a complaint to the human resources officer. Once again, um, well, this is a little bit different, because this says the employee and/or his union can, can initiate that, right? So that one, the union can initiate on behalf of, let's say, a group of employees without all the employees being there, right? That's step one, seven. So let's just say that you're unsuccessful at step two. Who can bring it to arbitration?
I would say that either the employee or the union can bring it to arbitration, okay.
But the problem with step three of this contract is it says either party. So when you have step one, and let's say it's the union and the employee to get together, and the other side, right? Union employee, municipality on the other side, right? Those are the party. When you get to step three, it says either party, right? So that means the employee perhaps loses that, right? That's step three.
Well, the employee, oh, forget it, right, the union now has hired its own private counsel and taken it to arbitration themselves.
Well, this contract doesn't, doesn't say that.
It can.
Our course is to, uh, go ahead and follow, um, but I mean, I will recognize that the fire contract, I don't think the employee at any rate, everything has to be initiated by the union, since it appears that contractually, or it's a cutting off rank and file, being able to break that, that's step three, you know, arbitration, state law, what I'm reading. So, you know, a lot of times these contracts aren't looked at by the registration file, you know, as far as the nuances, but I just wanted to raise those issues to your, your attention, so.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, thank you.
All right, now to Councilor Lathan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I also want to thank all the police officers, but I want to do it in a similar way that we did before, though I was a month ago, a couple months ago. So I would like to move that, uh, we approve the collective bargaining agreement between town of Longford and AFS, senior meeting council for, local fifteen seventy.
Second.
And I just think that it's important to show the support, um, to thank them, but also show the support that the town is together with the, with the public.
And, uh, describing those items to the Councilor, uh, Tad.
Thank you, everyone's working there for that, um, no, this contract was approved by the union. Sixty-five to zero, I'm sorry, sixty-five to zero, sixty-five to zero. So that's rather, um, attached. Um, aside from this, I noticed you mentioned that in this, there is, at some point, dental coverage for family members. And I only ask that because I haven't seen that. Is that something that's starting to, would we start seeing in other contracts? Is it becoming more and more of a, of a, of a negotiating point? How many of you have this?
So, council, this is the third move in, in the last six months.
Okay. Okay, so this is relatively new, so it is an issue, and it's become, and the town is negotiating it in, and I'm glad to see it, and, you know. Um, thank you, that's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, anyone else? Mr. Earl, uh, Councilor Earl.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I just, I wanted to say I was, I'm pleased to hear that this was a very respectful, uh, contract negotiation, and I too just want to thank all the officers for their professionalism and all that they do for the safety of our community. Every time I interact with one of your officers, they've been nothing but the utmost professional, and we are lucky to have, uh, each and every one serving our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, mention members of the public. All right, uh, I'd like to take a voice call on this, all in favor, see if I may say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion is unanimous. I thank you very much, chief, and thank you very much to members of the board. Chief, do you get a lot of applause?
That's, that's. Everybody goes.
All right, on to item, uh, hey, I'm discovering, uh, entertain a motion on the eighth, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bid waiver for Axon Enterprises.
Certainly.
Okay, motion is made in second, uh, so, I'll remind the house, we, we, I believe we already approved the funding for the site, this is just for the bid waiver. Right. Chief, is there anything that you'd like to add about the site?
Just, we're seeking a bid waiver, um, because, just like our body cameras, provider software, Axon is Axon, right? So you cannot pay to Axon, um, the Axon Assured Plan is specific to that company. The training that they provide to certify or instruct is specific to the company. Evidence that.
Evidence that, uh, which is used to upload the data from the phaser is specific to that company. So, um, kind of a package deal. Uh, that's why we're seeking a bid waiver to go with them. And honestly, there's no other person that can do what they do. There's no one that sells phaser or give you the, the plan that, uh, they're offering you. So that's why we're seeking the waiver for this purpose. Thank you. Uh, question from the Councilor, the Councilor Reed, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just wanted to let the public know, uh, there is no distribution system for Axon for government purposes. Uh, it's different commercially, but the, you know, any number of different places, you have to commercial, uh, consumer grade product. But this one is exclusively available by one vendor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, members of the public, any questions on the site? Well, I'll take a, a faint of voice vote again on this one. All in favor, say whether I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion is unanimous. Uh, what's the motion on number nine?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve appropriation of about fifteen thousand dollars to revenue federal branch account and to ERBA municipal radar signs. Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Senator Tessa.
This might be the first thing I can, I've been out there a long time. This may be the first, uh, vote on appropriation for the, uh, police department than any, than any public safety organization in town that I'm opposed to. And that's nothing to do with the, uh, organization, the value that is placed on the, on the appropriation. It's, uh, or anything else, let's just say it's unprincipled, it's an objection to the source of funding. Uh, at some point or another, um, we have to say enough. We're spending our, on just whatever pops up. That's what it seems like is happening now. We have some money to spend. It's like, what do we, what do we got, what do we got? I would authorize this out of any other fund in, in general government. So I think these signs are fantastic. Please understand that I'm not opposed to them, but I'm opposed to the use of our funds for them. Because at some point we have to say stop. And there are three items on here for our book, one which I am in favor of and two which I'm not. And this is one of them. So I just want to make it clear that it's nothing to do with the value of the, of the, of the item. I would, uh, approve anything. Take it from contingency, take it from anything. It's a fantastic use of funds, but it just sounds like one of those things where, uh, notice went out. Who has a wish list? You have some extra cash, let me know what you need. And that's where we're at right now, in my opinion. So that's why I'm opposed to this one. Thank you.
Councilor, go.
So Chief, what is this system actually used for? You know, other than me trying to get it to the triple digits, uh, going down Waze Street. I mean, does it, does the signal go somewhere? Is there some monitoring or is it just like personal knowledge that that's what you're doing?
So, when you put the sign out and deploy it, um, it tracks eighty-five percent down speed, maximum minimum, minimum speed where you're at, the traffic count, a couple of things. So it all goes into the cloud. It's not a live monitor, so if you try to triple digit the machine, it's not like you can, you can send a signal and it can go out there and catch you. But it's more so, you know, for statistics. So we get multiple complaints speeding in different residential neighborhoods. And unfortunately, based on, you know, our call by putting a cop on the side of the road for a week and just running radar, it's just not practical anymore. So you deploy the sign to these areas, um, you can review the data, you can put it out for a specific eye grading, two weeks, one week. Look away traffic counting, determine whether or not there's a speed issue at that specific location. If there is, you can either leave the, uh, sign in, in use for a little bit longer, or we can, you know, do a little bit more on the speed enforcement radar and laser, or putting a speed trail out there. Um, if there is a speed issue, we can move it because there's a lot of demand for these signs. Right now we have three signs at the state of Connecticut affiliated to us. Um, I think that adding a couple more signs would help us. Um, but no, it's not a live monitor. There are systems that we're looking at right now that do live monitoring, um, but this is not one.
So like the one over, um, across from where the mayor talked, what, what? That's been there for a while, right? And logistically, I don't know if you could actually put a, other than standing off where they're radar. And somebody chasing after the car, I guess, you know, chase cars, something like that. Um, of what practical use is that, that site? And why not move that? Well, we'll, we'll start with the first question. What practical use is that?
Well, I said that's a school zone and studies have shown that employing the traffic logic signs have a reduction of speed by three to five miles per hour. That has been, you know, documented in different deployments and different research. So it does speed, you know, slow the speed down. I mean, there are people that if they're not, it's not gonna slow down, right? So you're not gonna change your behavior. But for the most part, mostly the motorists that see that sign flash red, like they're over, I mean, it does cause you to slow down just a little bit. Now, studies show three to five miles per hour, which is better than not having anything going there.
So, you know, I forgot what the project it was. We talked about enhancements in the roadway to, you know, once it's established in a particular area. I think we talked about it with Havelin.
Yes.
Couple of years ago, right? So, I, I guess that's something else that this, these reports could be used, you know, where you could identify an area that there's been, everybody speeding. And you could put an accoutrement in the roadway like a speed pump to stop that. So where are you thinking of utilizing these two additional units?
So I have to consult our traffic division to see where their demand is. I know there's some of the, of areas that I get directly sent to my office for the permission, but there is a running list of where we can employ them. We just, we don't have the resources or the science to do it. So it's kind of an interpretation. One on Northland and Tana Teater, like I said, because of the school zone. There are different things that are out there right now. We've had some meetings, uh, to try to address this, you know, aggressive driving town, um, that could replace some of those signs in the school zone. Or there's another conversation for another day, but, you know, for now, I think that those signs strategically placed based on what we had as far as complaints come in, um, would be beneficial.
So I'm sort of, you know, listening to Councilor Tessa, you know, his objection. You know, I'm not hearing that we have a place for these. There's a need to be addressed presently. It's like we're gonna buy the infrastructure, we'll figure it out afterwards, whereas, you know, we've been up here talking about things that we'd like to spend our dollars upon. And I'm just looking at the dynamics of the two. Want another shot at that? I mean, is there? Is this, is this a need that is apparent and is necessary at this time?
I mean, absolutely. For, for speeding, yes, absolutely. And, and there, there is areas that we can put in one. It's just, I would have to look at where we are. There is a backlog of places that we can.
We have more facilities now and we have science to, 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 to get more science to have, more, more areas we can address. And then we can learn, learn better trajectories for our actual police officers that sit on roadside. Really, it's something like that. And you heard from high sensitivity, this is, uh, careful compassion, something like that.
Yeah, I know. And I'm just looking at, as Councilor Tessa was, you know, the budget sort of. So, you know, we had a budget that we dealt with in, in May. And this was not part of the budget. There was no, you know, so I have to assume that since the budget got booked, that this need has come up during that period of time, otherwise there wouldn't have been a request in the budget for this. So.
So full transparency, Councilor, I mean, we, you know, the broach of projects, like what we, what you as a partner, as a town, you know, because there's one there, right? So we looked at a mobile demand trailer for the town. So we don't have a mobile plan set for the town. They're way critical. So we looked at that and priced it out. Um, you're looking at somewhere between three quarters of a month or seven, that's not happening until we would never even request that. Uh, we looked at license plate readers for, for the town. And that's, so most of the towns surrounding us have some sort of contract with companies to, you know, solve license plate readers in the town. So when cars come in, you can, you can plug cars. It's a great tool for us to have, but it's also extremely expensive. So what we did to alleviate that cost, or even not even ask you, was to kind of seek different methods to which we can achieve or attain those items, uh, asking them, which we're working on a kind of successful so, so far. So, we looked at speed, right? So there is an issue in town and we need to start addressing it a little more aggressively. But unfortunately, the call by in town and things that we have to, uh, the full unit has to do, I can buy the time more so than we did in the past. We can stick a car beside the road, run the radar for an hour or two and, and, you know, write some tickets and try to make a difference. So, saw the opportunity, um, talked to the mayor about it, you know, he was on board with it. So I, I put it into the five, uh, systems and, you know, if it's something that the council wants, by all means, you know, we really appreciate it. If not, you know, we'll figure out another way to do it.
But personally, I would agree that tools need, but the, you know, the mobile, mobile command system, um, center. What about the, the one that's over at the EMS that, you know, people, um, you also fire up? They've got a trailer that they represent near. It used to be a mobile, you know, it's hooked up to the radio and all that stuff. We've got a traumatic event, you know, the mobile unit, that's the year.
Right, and over the past month, um, we've been in works with joining the South Central Region, um, emergency response team. Um, we've been located for a limited joint that team. Uh, we will come to you in the future to discuss that. But part of that agreement, you have access to a state new crisis center. So that's what I say we kind of follow, but that's what I prefer to.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Allen.
I was just gonna share that when I pass those things, a lot of times I have no idea how fast I'm going, even though it's literally on my dashboard. Like how often do we really look down? We're supposed to look at the road. So when I see something flashing at me that's like, you're going faster than the speed limit, I'll say my number. And I do tend to slow down. And I think that that's a really important thing, especially in an area like the center of town where there are tons of walkers. So, um, I wholeheartedly support it and I just, you know, I, I thought I'd be talking five minutes sooner, so it would be a better time, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, on this, uh, I'll just address the art thing for a second. So, my email is open to all comers that have suggestions. Well, we'd like to spend the art money, right? And I haven't gotten any suggestions as far as matter to put on the agenda. I would entertain all items. The mayor's open to that as well. So he, in the way that I think the mayor probably should, asks his departments, what do you need? And so the police said that we'd like this piece of equipment. So you can object to the equipment, you can object to the expenditure, but the mayor's essentially doing what we as a council asked, right? We asked for items to spend our, on. He provided the items. If you want to go in another direction, you're certainly entitled to it. I've received a single request, uh, you know, paid for, uh, an item that we'd like to spend the money on in terms of a tangible idea. We've had sort of highfalutin ideas, like we'd like to have, you know, a heart or whatever, but like if you have an actual idea, break forward and you can certainly, I'm happy to entertain it. Uh, so this discussion of, you know, this is the wrong thing to spend our money on. I mean, it's our money to begin with. So if this is the, I think this is a great expenditure. Uh, speeding is obviously a problem in town. Uh, the police came forward with a recommendation. Uh, I'm all in support. So any other discussion on this item? Councilor, Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess we'll just respond to that. I, I have no problem. This is a good, uh, thing to have in my town. I don't know where I'd hope to have one of these because people, you know, go like seven AM, thirty-five. Um, I, so I'm just confused, again, but so we talked about we need to spend the money. Then last evening you said, well, we really don't because we can just put it all towards the pool in some way or pay for this and put it back. But now we're back to spending it. So, um, that's, that's my only trapage. I know we have sort of a list of projects and, you know, I, at this point, I'm not gonna argue over if we can tell a dollar, but I'm just, I also don't think that I have the ability to propose an actual project in order to have the ability to put it out there and order back the bill. So I can't email any suggestions, right? I did mention that I would love to invest some money in something here towards you, but I, you know, I guess when I was a kid, I used to try to ride my bike past these things and see if the register out. That was possible, maybe it's a school project too. But anyway, I just, you know, I, I just wanted to address that, like, you know, the goalposts kind of move a little bit here. You know, maybe it's the wind, maybe it's, uh, you know, maybe it's fog, I don't know, but it seems like the goalpost is moving to me. So that's, that's just my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. I mean, I would disagree that the goalposts moved. I think last meeting was sort of a correction that we didn't anticipate. However, I think the pool was a project that started with the council. The council's been asking questions about the pool. So we pushed the pool and now we're putting it up a bit. So I think, you know, to say you don't have the ability, uh, to suggest a project, I mean, the pool obviously has been something we've talked about for a very long time, right? But that's something that originated with the council. So, so don't think you don't have the authority. I guess if you have a project, then let's talk about it. Where can you go? Council official.
I agree with Councilor Allen. Uh, you know, we've been talking about skate parks for a while, I think. So, I propose that we use our dollars for skate parks. That would you want to hear? I mean, let's, let's do something because, you know, those kids that can't afford, don't have time, parents don't support, they're restricted activity after school. A lot of them get in trouble. They don't have things to do now. I mean, nobody can walk to park and rap. Park and rap, you know, children in the Simpson Court and all that stuff, but, you know, the kids that live over on East Street, they'll play at West Side Field, perhaps. They can't make use of all the stuff that they park and rap. They, they get there. They got their law, something like that. So, I mean, we're spending on this agenda. We're spending two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I mean, the numbers that we've been looking at for skate parks for a long time, like three hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I don't know what we gotta do to do it, but I'm, I'm, I'm saying, we're at a council meeting, I'm saying, we'd like, some of us maybe, would like to have a skate park in our town. What do we gotta do? Make a motion to make a committee? I mean, what do we got there?
No next agenda.
Yeah, I mean, we'll put on the next agenda.
Put in the next agenda, maybe.
Okay, so let's, let's do it because, I mean, this money is going away and I'm hearing, we haven't talked, you know, we haven't gotten any plans. I mean, the whole list from, uh, Council Todd, two years ago, of, of, of all stuff, skate park is on the list. So I'm picking it. I'm pushing it and I think we should be doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Members of the public? Madam Director, you got your call roll?
Allen, yes. Harmony?
Yes.
Ishra?
Yes.
Lathan?
Yes.
Leaning?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tessa?
Yes.
All right. Yes, thank you. Where's the members? Thank you, Councilor. Thank you very much.
Councilor, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, I'm bringing in applause. I'm moving on to item number ten.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve an appropriation of about one hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars to revenue federal branch account and to ERBA municipal radar upgrade.
Second. Okay, Mr. Senator, this is your item.
Anything, everyone? So, this is to put our financial management system as cloud-based. As part of the, uh, technology report with consultants, uh, preparing, uh, one recommendations. And that this would alleviate the need to replace three servers that are at pretty close to the end of their useful life. Uh, some of the advantages of going through the cloud are, it would be, the updates are automatic, patches secure. It's always on big conversions, whereas now, the IT department, those who equals and, you know, those patches and, and security. Uh, disaster recovery is covered by the company where, you know, this building gets taken out. We should be stacked up and running as soon as possible. One of the main reasons to do this is the old administration. One of the main reasons to do this is the old administration kind of kind of idea about having these systems. So there's only, water, sewer, electric have access to it, finance has access to it. And that's pretty much it. What we would like to be able to do is move, if we move it to the cloud, we can open this up to other departments to eliminate some complication of effort, such as if the fire department wants to do a purchase drive, they have to type in all the information and different software, print out that requisition, it's set to purchasing, comes to finance and then they have to put that same exact information into units or higher, you know, their, their channel to get the purchase order done. So this would allow us to open the system where fire can override it, write into system and then for the rack, those purchasing, they convert it to work. Uh, this would also, you know, this would give people the ability to work from home as well. So those are my kind of points for this.
All right. To the council, starting with Councilor Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Senator. We've had a opportunity to talk about this in, in previous sessions. Additional going to, uh, the cloud release does bring us up to, uh, current divisions in the platform which we are unable to develop to be listed server, software for storage, matching systems that are currently placed. There's an inherent risk, uh, I believe that we have right now that was identified in the study, for not keeping up to date, uh, as far as, as far as server package, and the whole and the entire infrastructure. There is also inherent security improvements that are given by going to the cloud, which gives us larger capabilities that the otherwise would not have on a steady basis. Mr. Senator can go in as well as IT staff and take a look at who's, who's accessing, what data, what records, where, from, from where, when, et cetera. I don't know necessarily that we're moving to a culture where all financials are, but the opportunity to be able to do is there in the event that we do have, for example, power issues, et cetera, that our financials just can't be down for a period of time. And that includes, you know, so the budget disaster recovery pieces are going to be able to resume from anywhere. Use of processing of a lot of financial, they're able, and everything else is going forward. Plus it gives us one more step forward, uh, to be able to enable things like direct economy, et cetera, which is, that's a, that's a core design that we have that we're trying to fix.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Alton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so, uh, if I understand this correctly, so the, so this is a comment of the technology upgrade plan that we are all, you're referring to as well, right? So this one hundred forty-nine thousand baked in, so here, okay. Yes, okay. Um, and I'm understanding there's efficiencies being created here. We're gonna be at a speed, we're actually gonna be using what we pay for and it'll be utilized across other departments that don't currently have access to this, correct?
Right, yes.
Okay. And this would, if we ever had a reason to all go home and work from home, this would allow somebody to input this information from somewhere other than here in Colorado. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on, Counselor Bittman.
Thank you. You know, I'm, I'm not against technology upgrades here. But I want to ask about the work from home. We would, I mean.
I was just using that example of, you know, when, when the mayor, former mayor, was, thing was kind of flawed and he didn't have, so work from home would probably be permitted when I'm working on a budget on the weekend and I'm driving half an hour here. I think you stop that home.
Yeah, no, I got, there are a lot of them.
Please, thank you. Um, so since COVID, we, we know we need some kind of facility, resilient supply to continue to operate in the event that, for whatever reason, you can't get in this building, whether it's a disease or it's a catastrophic, catastrophic event in the building. So the plan is to have departments able to work, to operate their departments from home and give that, that, some of that courage to, that's, you know, getting town home.
I appreciate that. And my question has to do with the procedure. I expect that there's gonna be some sort of appropriation or request to give departmental laptops, something they have now.
So the prior requests, um, I think it was the last, well, there have been several expenditures approved from a variety of sources that will include laptops for the department. So they've already, um, they've already, I believe they've already been approved. And I think one of the last buckets that was for technology included that purchase or contemplated those purchases.
So, and, and I'm not, I'm not requesting this, I'm not desiring it. Uh, but it has been talked about in the past. Is it contemplated that the council will have a dedicated laptop? Because I don't like that the state, I have a laptop, I just never, I never use it. So why do you want to know? I'm not, once again, I'm not requesting, and that's, that's the thing. I'm inquiring whether or not, you know, because, like, we don't have an email. Like, we talked about having an email address that's dedicated, right? You don't have that, I'm sure it's coming at some point. So I'm just trying to ask a question about the future brains. I'm not gonna push, I mean, is that contemplated?
That may be a campaign. You know, the, the council is budgeted as a department and if the department head wants to make such a request, we could look into that. But that, I mean, that from an administrative perspective, um, it's not something that, that we are necessarily looking at. But if, if the department can justify it, you know, we're certainly going to have a conversation.
Okay, that's all I, or conversation, all of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, we have a Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd be happy with just a council email address. I don't think we have that, so just for the record, she created that, you probably got an email address for the council work. Hopefully that's coming. My question is, um, and Mr. Mayor, you may have touched on this. I believe we, um, we approved approximately seven hundred thousand dollars, maybe a month or so ago for, um, technology, I think the new head of IT, that sort of thing. Was, this is in addition to that, I understand, correct?
This is separate from that.
Okay, and was, that was more for hardware and this is the software purchase then?
Correct.
Okay. And then is this an ongoing, like, an annual subscription or is this a one-time call?
So this is the one-time cost to go up there, get our money, and then we had annual maintenance. So the annual maintenance cost would be a little higher. But, um, you know, we did, we did do a cost benefit with, you know, consultant and pretty much within, by year three or four, we kind of rid even with allocating, not having to keep purchasing servers and stuff, training staff, kind of update the stuff.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I think, and I just, I'm sure you all asked a question. So if these three ARPA things are approved today, there leaves about five hundred forty-five thousand unallocated and that number is sure to grow as these brothers are winding down and anything that had too much funding and then you turn back and put into that number. But I'm sure that's all in the back of your mind, so I figured I, I.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Alton.
Personally, I would also look at, at council email. Uh, so, um, I think before we ever headed towards laptops, the council, though, we looked at our, you know, so we can have what we have. But as an aside, uh, will this eventually, like, so as we replace, uh, this is, I think it's off topic personally, but, um, as we replace, uh, hardware, will this also enable you to provide laptops for everybody so that you get off of, like, workstation type of computers? Or, like, as it's being, as replacements come up, not necessarily replacing everything that's off the ones?
I mean, I think that's a, um, I can speak for that. I, I think the goal right now is to, you get the department heads with laptops. I mean, some of my staff doesn't not need a laptop to process bills, you know. The tax office, they don't really need laptops to, to do what they're doing. So I don't know if the goal of the management is for everyone to have a laptop. But I think, you know, if there's a, a need for it, I'm sure that's a route that we can go. But I think that's more the IT directors' call than, than mine.
For sure, I get that. Uh, I just am cognizant of if we know we're really resiliency, resiliency planning. I imagine the department has still on doing the entire job for everybody. So it's definitely something to consider for the future. But for now, I think this is a great item and I'm happy with it.
And just because it's come up a few times. So the mayor and I have had some conversations about council email, about potentially other ways to get packets, like not necessarily by email, by, like, portal or something. So things that are being sort of looked into, an additional wifi in the chamber and so on and so forth. So I think a lot of changes are coming. It's just been, it's fallen a little slower, uh, I think than I had anticipated. But, you know, obviously a lot of this backend is a lot more than I anticipated as well. So Counselor Reed probably knows more about it than I do. Any other questions on this item? Question from the public? Better quickly, kind of, tell the role.
Alton, yes. Harmony?
Yes.
Ishra?
Yes.
Lathan?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Tessa?
No.
Marlon?
I don't know, yes, motion passed. Item eleven. I'll make a motion to approve an appropriation around six one thousand from, uh, Reverend Colonel Grant to Arba Municipal Public Park.
Second.
Our motion's ready, second. Mayor, your hand on this.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Michaels is not available tonight. So council may recall that it previously proved five thousand dollars worth of improvements in this basketball court that went out to bid. And it came back sixty-one thousand dollars higher than anticipated. So thought was to come back to the council for the same source of funding, for the same project. So it actually, I, I can't remember which project, Senator, I don't know if you do, but there was, um, a recreation apartment project where the council had approved Arba funding and, um, it was not fully realized because the project costs less. So there's a little bit of money left over in another recreation apartment project.
There was, there was about twelve thousand of, one, you can park a wreck, left, um, two-wheel camera and then the van gets getting turned back over.
All right. Uh, questions on this item? Uh, starting with Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The basketball court, Do Little Park, that's, we've really, there are some issues with. Is this the same vendor, will it be the same vendor or is it something else?
It, it's gone out to bid, I think the same vendor, when the word bid, they, um, so the, the court that's on, I believe it's Wall Street, um, that court was completely straight, scraped and repeated. And, um, it's fine, they stood behind the project.
Okay, so that's all, that's all behind this mix?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I, I personally am a fan of this team because they receive so much attention. And, uh, I think they, they look impressive.
Good, that's good to hear, thank you. The flooding issue at Crater Park, is that, I, I hear anecdotes about it a lot. Is that an annoying issue? Is that just, is there a park there because it's an area that floods and maybe that's just what it is? I'm, I'm not really sure. I, I always hear that, you know, the park is flooding, there are issues and, uh, I'm not, I'm still really know what situation is.
You know, I, I don't know. I do know we've had a few years historically and I know there are parts of the park that are wet. I, I don't, I can't be certain, but I don't think this is one of them.
Okay. Yeah, it's not what I was gonna be concerned, you know, that would affect it. But, uh, the other question I have, is there, I heard there is an endowment in Crater Park that has money sitting in it. I don't know if it was presented, you know, but I, I heard it recently, I had it noted. Is, is there an endowment? Is there money sitting in there and do you need to go with that?
There is a trust fund or a Crater Park currently in the June thirty, uh, the June thirtieth, sorry, September thirtieth, there's about a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars there.
Okay, that's fun. That was a gift from somebody initially?
Yes.
And what are the acceptable uses for that money?
So it has to be spent on a park place. I think we've done fencing and stuff, but I, I would have to go back to, to the agreement. Like, you know, it has to be used for Crater Park.
So there is a, a facility there, like a snack bar or something with storage. And I believe that, which I can roll, needs significant improvement. And, um, I think that is a potential use for those funds.
Okay, so you, we kind of have that earmarked, that department could use that for this trust.
It's contemplated, yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the use of Arba for our parks. I said that since the beginning. I just, this one, this one doesn't sit well with me. I think a hundred sixty-one thousand dollars for basketball court seems like a lot of money, especially when we have a trust fund sitting there with some money in it. So, um, I'll, I'll look at the others one side of it.
Uh, thank you. Moving on to Counselor Alton.
My question was also regarding whether it's the same vendor and, um, do we know how much we spent on the Do Little Basketball courts?
I, I do not have that.
I, I did also ask Mr. Michaels and I, I think he knows it right now. I'm, and you know, my concern is that presumably the vendor came back to essentially surface the lines on that were bubbling out of warranty. And I'm just wondering what the comparative spend is between the two. Like, are we actually funding our own re-line of the basketball court? Not to say that that's, not to make any accusations, I mean, it's just a little suspicious to me. So, um, I think I'd like a little more information, um, so I'll compare, thank you.
I, I can't say that it was a, okay, it was a big cost, so that, you know, it had to be awarded to the lowest qualify bidder. You know, we're, we're not going back to that to say, thank you for standing up to the warranty. You know, let's try and get a bid. It was subject to a potential big cost.
Counselor, what was the second bid? Was it more than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Like they, so they won the bid at a hundred and then they came back and said, no, that was the hundred.
The, the hundred was an estimate, no?
So we, we just, we thought it would be a hundred and then the lowest bid came in at one sixty?
Yes.
From the vendor that did the dual.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I just say, well, like, you know, one of the reasons why we're trying to use the same source of funding is for, when people ask how much did that cost? You know, a hundred thousand dollars was funded sixty-one thousand and that one was a decrease. And you, just like, that, you know, that's why it was chosen to stay in that same account.
So, you know, the issue for me really is just, I don't remember exactly the other court's cost, but I was saving for the last, right? And so it just seems like an awful lot of money to spend on a basketball court. But I believe this, is it concrete now or is it asphalt current?
I, I'm not certain, but I believe it's asphalt.
I don't know what the asphalt court would cost, but it would be substantially cheaper than a hundred sixty grand. I, I mean, I understand that this is sort of the, the trend is to the high tension in concrete. It just seems like an awful lot of money to spend in, you know, in that particular spot.
My, my observation is that, um, you, you get three times the, like, you get a twenty-year warranty. My, my intuition is that, um, you, you get three times the life, you get a twenty-year warranty on the concrete, you get a ten-year warranty on the paint. Um, so that's why it seems desirable, whereas, you know, asphalt, you see what happens to our roads, you see what happens to other asphalt basketball courts.
On to Councilor Vick.
So, I've never seen parking racks off that far, on estimate, especially since Dulittle, I think that did a year before, it went out, you know, so basketball court generally the same size, I would think that they would have had decent numbers to be estimated, but over sixty-one thousand dollars off. So, that, you know, and I, I agree, it just seemed a little weird, but, you know, at the very point that the administration decided to use ARPA dollars for this particular project, you know, I've been up here, what, fifteen years, I have never heard about an endowment in this park, never. Um, you know, I think that our job is to determine where we're going to get paid for, and it's unfair to say for not to disclose to us, I don't know, this mayor, the part, former mayor, unfair to not disclose, because these are the places you can't get the money from. I think if I had known at the time when this was originally approved, that there was a hundred thousand dollars, and then some in this fund, I don't think I would have approved it coming out of ARPA to begin with. Uh, so I don't think it was before us should come out of ARPA. I think that the endowment that's there can afford the sixty-one thousand dollars, never heard anybody from parking rack come to us about rehabbing the building there. Isn't it in the budget, nothing like that? I think that's the whole weird thing, I mean, we sort of generally talk tonight about a possible project for ARPA dollars. I'd like to park the sixty-one thousand with the expectation of maybe doing something with a ski park or something, um, just remind everybody that, so, I, I mean, and Mr. Senate, I know you work very hard, and, and I appreciate everything you do, but I think it would be helpful for us, and we've got a list of all these endowments and trusts and all this stuff, because ultimately, under the charter, that's our job. So, I think it's the administration, you know, you take direction from the administration, but, you know, I I don't want to get to the point that every appropriation that we're reviewing up here, we have to, you know, well, there are other places we can get the money from, you know, are you sure about that? We should be working together again in close, so it's better of a taxpayer, ARPA dollars, or tax out. And it can be used for a wide array of things, whereas this fund that I've heard of the first time tonight going to be used for limited purpose, and I think that limited purpose means a basketball court, and I think it should be used for that, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Give us a discussion on the side, Chairman, on the, Councilor Madsen.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, honestly, only in the past several weeks have I become aware of Pregnant Park and Endowment. Um, and there is no, there has been no overt action to apply the funds towards the, uh, snack bar facility, storage facility, but that is in the course, you know, this is in the course of that conversation, um, that, that I think more than that, so you know, none of that, that money's not gonna be spent without coming to the council, it's not gonna be, it's served issue fashion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, thank you for your question, Councilor Madsen.
So, I'm hesitant to vote for it tonight, um, with the two major concerns being, what did the other court cost? And why were we sixty percent off, council fishpoint, fish by the point, which, I also want to ask, that's a, it's huge, so they built basketball courts, and they were sixty percent off, but is it just simply, we decided to completely change from one type of court to the other, and that will cost sixty percent more? I don't know, I just, I would feel better having, you know, maybe park around here, or, um, and finding out how much we spent on the Dulittle court, um, and did, did we spend one sixty, did we spend two hundred, I'm, I'm just trying to understand. And, and maybe I'm just a little, you know, gun-shy on the basketball court thing, because we've had some issues, we don't want to find out it's the same vendor, and maybe that's just completely fluke, and that's a problem with the site, and there's a little street that runs by there, there's just a different order table, it could be a lot of things, sure, um, but I think an extra two weeks, for me and everybody anyway, with people here to answer some of our questions, that I think we've all kind of run out there, would be better, so I mean, I like the main motion, then we table this discussion until the next meeting.
Senator.
Actually, you know, I, I have to have a problem, initial motion, we can just kick this one, I think, done. And move your second, okay. All right, good, uh, anyone else here to make a motion on this item? See, go for the justice, this meeting is adjourned.